I'm meeting the Ronaquoye zoning board of appeals to order. If everyone will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we get underway, I'd like to cover a few administrative matters. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator, use either the north or the south steps that leave the building. Our minutes are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of minutes and a record, but not a verbatim transcript. But in order to help her make sure that we've got an accurate reflection of what takes place, we'd ask that when you come to the microphone, you identify yourself each time with your name. When you come to the, when the applicant comes to the podium for the first time, we'll ask for their name and their address. We'll then stop, take a minute, I'll raise your right hand, I'll swear the applicant in, and then after that, we'll proceed to hear the case. We follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are available next to the door. As I said, we call the cases one at a time. The applicant or their representative comes forward, states their name and address, I'll then swear them, and then they present their case. During the presentation of the applicant's case, any members of the board that have questions or comments can interact with the applicant. And when that process has been concluded, then we will open it up to public input. Over the years, we've developed three categories of public input so far. The first that we ask for is those who wish to speak in favor of the application to come forward. If there's more than one person, if you would line up along the west wall there so that we can have you come up one at a time. Public portion is not sworn, only the applicant gets sworn. After we hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, then we'll call upon those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And when we've heard from everyone who's opposed to the application, we will then take the third category that's been identified, which is you want to talk to us about something that has something to do with the application, but you're not either in favor of it or opposed to it, you just want to essence comment on something, whether it's chickens, fences, corner lots, whatever it may be. When we've concluded all of the public input, we'll then give the applicant an opportunity to come back to the podium and address any points that came up during the public input, and the board will then ask any other questions or engage in any other discussion that we feel is appropriate. Once we've heard all of the cases that are on the agenda, the board will take a short recess, and when we come back, we will then deliberate and make decisions on the cases in the order that they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant or their representative is still present. So, for example, if the first applicant has left, we would take up the second case because the second applicant is still here, and we would go through all the applicants who remained in the order on the agenda, and then go back to the top and do the cases for the applicants that have left. During that portion of the meeting, there is no public input unless the board requests it. We'll have discussions among the boards, we'll make determinations, but that's not a part of the meeting that is subject to further questioning or discussion. If you want to leave early, you're welcome to, and if you're interested in knowing what our decision was, you can either catch us, I think we're up in the 1300s now on cable, or you can call the planning and zoning department tomorrow morning after nine o'clock, and they'll be glad to tell you what we decided. So I think that covers all the administrative matters. We will now get underway with our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1903-1, upon the matter of request by patio enclosures acting as agent for Joseph DeRuder for area variances to construct a sunroom with less than required rear setback and exceeding maximum permitted lot coverage on premises 27 Anchor Terrace in an R2 residential district.
Philip Hart, 123 Dispatch Drive, East Rochester, patio enclosure acting as the agent for Joseph DeRuder.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
So we are proposing construction of a sunroom on the rear of the house, and our situation is that we have lot coverage and rear setback.
That seems to be a rather optimistic term, "sunroom."
Yes. It will be coming. And the lot coverage automatically put us into needing a variance, and then the setback also, so those are the two issues that we have.
Any questions or comments from the board? This could be similar to the picture you have here?
Yes.
Is it going to be off the ground too?
Yes, it's at house floor level.
House floor level?
Yes.
Is it going to be built upon a deck or is it going to have a footer?
It's going to be pier footers, so yeah, it is a deck construction. Purpose of the deck construction, then the backyard doesn't get destroyed with a, you know, backhoe and all that. So everything is hand carried into the yard, won't really disrupt the neighborhood at all.
All right, unless somebody on the board has any further questions or comments, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about footers, sunrooms, lot coverage, anything at all like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1903-2, upon the matter of request by Brittany Fluger for an area variance to install a six-foot-high side yard fence exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 388 Angeles Drive in an R2 residential district.
Hi, I'm Brittany Fluger, the owner of 388 Angeles Drive, Rochester, New York.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
I am requesting a two-foot variance in my fence. Currently, I have a six-foot fence setback to the chain link fence of my neighbors on Angeles. I'm looking to just extend it about 30 feet to the corner of my house. The way my house is set up, the driveway is on Brower, so that's where the front door is in the driveway and my mailbox and all of that, but what is considered, my side yard would be on Angeles, which is where my address is from. I am just wanting to extend it to the corner of the house out, and then there would still be over 30 feet from the sidewalk, so it doesn't obstruct the view from the sidewalk or the stop signs or anything like that.
So you'd kind of like to use your lot the way it's laid out?
Yes.
The way the town views it, right?
Yes, because it's very difficult, so the garage door isn't fenced in, so I can't use it at all to like mow my lawn and get back there, and like the summer, I paved my backyard and had to carry them all the way around through the back, so it was difficult.
Yeah, just for those who are watching, the town says that the smaller side is your front yard, and everything's off of that, but houses frequently are not laid out with that in mind.
Correct, yes.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, there's a, there's something there now. It looks like, it's not really a fence, it's looks like a fence.
The outline, yes. So when I originally paid for the fence, I paid in cash to do it. They told me, because it was the weekend, that they could start it and then go on Monday to get the permit to do it and everything would be fine, and then I went, and it was actually Michelle. I went and she told me that it was unable to because of the side yard thing, and I like lost my mind and cried, and she actually called and told them to give me my money back because I paid them already for it, which was a big ordeal. And he was pretty angry about it, but he didn't know what he was talking about, because if so, he would have told me I needed to wait until I got a permit, and I listened to him. So yeah, so there's the outline of where it would be, so that's the only, I would just want to extend that, and I actually have all the fence in my garage still that I paid for.
So it's the posts that are up?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, so there's like a shell.
And that brings up a good point, that it was not her fault, and we've talked about this in reference to contractors that will do a job when it doesn't conform to code.
Yeah, and promise that it can get done. If you're paying cash, we'll give you a discount too, so it's already paid for.
Right, and in some, I know we're looking into some type of action against.
So unfortunately, the way the code works, the property owner is always responsible for following the town code, so even if they get bad advice, the fees or the code enforcement action is taken against the property owner unless we're able to call the, you know, if we're able to take action against an individual contract, we certainly would. That can be challenging, however, sometimes, so it's always with the property owner. So property owners are really needing to be educated consumers and double check what they're being told.
I understand.
We do have a new, not a new, but we've called out or in the revised fee schedule, there is an as-built review charge for projects that come to this board without getting the proper approvals prior.
Has that already been instituted?
Approved, yes.
It has been approved?
Correct.
I'd love to see a copy of that.
I will send it to the board.
Is there any way that, and was it discussed with the town board in reference to?
I don't know that we have the standing in terms of, that becomes, it becomes a private, it can be a private matter of the he said, she said, or, so it can be a, it can be a little bit of a challenge.
Well, couldn't you have some kind of a statute that says that it's unlawful for a contractor to do work in the town that's not in conformity with the code and make the contractor responsible unless they have a signed waiver from the owner indicating that the owner is aware that they are responsible for getting permits and checking with the town?
So we can certainly take a look at whether or not we can strengthen the current code.
I mean, here's a perfect example that she's trying, she's trusting the contractor, and this is not the first time it's happened, she's not the only one it's ever happened to.
Right, instances where an applicant is advised incorrectly, and it's, we will often send a notification to the contractor or communicate with the contractor that they are in fact incorrect in their, what they're telling folks. So we do take that step when we know the contractor has either, is incorrectly informed one of our residents.
I mean, it's, it's, one that was done, was done by either Lowe's or home.
It was Lowe's.
Lowe's, and, you know, again, it's.
Yeah, so in that case, we.
No recourse on these contractors or businesses, and then, you know, obviously, the homeowner takes some responsibility also, it's their home, but here you have, you know, oh yeah, it's okay, and we're, you know, we'll get started now.
Yes, so we will certainly take a look to see if there's a way to add that provision into town code, but we're doing everything we can to communicate with folks when we do, when we, when it comes to our attention.
Very good, thank you, thank you for bringing it up.
Of course, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, if I lived, if I lived in your house, I'd want that fence too.
Right?
Right out there.
It's so unused, and I have like godchildren that come over, and I'd want to put like a swing set and stuff up for them, and I can't because it's just so small, what I had to end up getting fenced in, so I hope so.
It would increase the usage of your backyard by 90% probably.
Yeah, exactly, I never used that back portion because there's no point.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there anyone who would want to speak to the board in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences, corner lots, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the case with respect to this matter and move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, yes?
I need to say real quick, we live across the street from where we have a fence.
Can you just, may you just?
Can you give your name and address to Michelle?
Would you mind coming up to the podium for us? Do you mind, please, just for the record?
But all the viewers see you on TV.
It's my 15th, not a problem, my 15 minutes?
Well, we do have a large following on TV.
Oh, wow, I'll take it. Oh, my name is, what, you want me to swear the truth and all that?
Nope, name and address.
Okay, my name is Michael Yates, I live at 387 Angeles Drive. And she could still have the fence.
Thank you.
Actually, yeah, let her have the fence tomorrow for all.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Yates.
Did I overlook anyone else who wanted to talk about this before we move on? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Next item on the agenda, excuse me, is case number ZB 1903-3, upon the matter of request by Dan Green acting as agent for Daniel and Carol Horzog for an area variance to expand the existing attached garage with less than required side setback on premises 69 Scotch Lane in an R1 residential district.
Hi, I'm Dan Green, I reside at 74 Sheffield Road.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
We're here tonight just to get a side variance because my client wants to extend the width of their garage by about 10 feet, and that would encroach on the side lot line exceeding the setback, and I guess we're looking for relief of about four feet.
You're driving around on Scotch Lane, I noticed that this is like, I think, one of the few, if there are any others, that only has a single car garage?
I've never noticed.
Pretty much everyone has a double car garage on.
Everybody wants a two-car garage.
Yeah. Well, some want three or four.
Yeah.
Or seven or eight, we've had them.
Yeah, so that's all we're looking for, is relief of about four feet to make the garage two-car.
Has there been any talk to the neighbors that it might affect?
Yeah, the homeowner, before he went away, he talked to the neighbors on both sides and across the street, and they had no issues.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about side setbacks, garages, two cars, whatever? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case, move on to the next matter on the agenda.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB 1903-4, upon the matter of request by Jeffrey Ledoux acting as agent for Rachel Conrad for area variances to construct a new single-family dwelling with less than required front and side setbacks on premises 112 Hartsdale Road in an R2 residential district.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Ledoux, architect with DDS Companies, here representing Rachel Conrad in regards to property at 112 Hartsdale, looking for the board's.
Your address, sir?
I'm sorry?
Your address?
45 Hendrix Drive, West Henrietta, New York.
And if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Again, here on behalf of Ms. Conrad and speaking to you about 112 Hartsdale Road, we're asking for variance, three area variances with respect to setbacks. The house was destroyed by fire, and looking to reconstruct the house in its scale and character and the, and within the limits of the existing footings or foundation wall, hence the variance request, one of in the front yard, one to the, one to the west side yard, and a setback with respect to the east side yard and with regards to the driveway. And again, the limits or the measurements as stated in the application are to the existing foundations.
So if I understand you correctly, if we weren't to grant you the variance, you'd have to move the foundation walls in?
Yes.
From where they were all along until the house was destroyed by fire?
That's correct.
So you're not really asking for, you're asking just to go back to what?
We're not, we're not looking to increase the nonconformance of the existing foundation, we're looking to work within it and within the scale. So you end up with basically a house of similar size, one and a half stories, a two-bedroom, one and a half bath house.
Was this a pre-existing nonconforming?
So would be, would have been deemed pre-existing nonconforming with respect to the setbacks, however, because the structure was more than 50% destroyed, then our code says at that point, 50% of the structure or 50% of the value, in this case, it was probably 97% of the, 95% of the, with the foundation only, being the only thing that was able to be salvaged. So in that instance, anything over 50%, then has to be brought into conformance, that is why they're back before this board, for those watching at home.
And it can't be used as an in-ground pool?
It would be a very strangely shaped in-ground pool, and you can't have one without a principal structure.
Right, so basically, you just want to put it back together after.
Yeah, but I want to make, make it known both to the board, and I know that there's neighbors present, this, this has been an ongoing process with respect to insurance, money, design, trying to find basically the right fit. A decision, we've gone through more than one iteration at my company, a decision was made not too long ago, basically to try to replicate what was there, and that's the intent. It's, I think, so that it would be within the character and nature of the neighborhood, and also from basically, you know, the site, there's only so much you can do, so the intent was to use, to not request any variances with respect to increasing nonconformities. Basically, work as, basically, the clean sheet of paper is the boundaries of the existing foundation, and that's what we're presenting. We've met with the town, there was some questions raised about connection to utilities and such, and we'll work through that as the process goes forward to make sure that all that, all, you know, is done with, with respect to the decisions or, you know, and working with the building department and the town to make sure that, you know, the approvals are made and it's built accordingly.
All right, I just want to clarify for those who are here and those who are going to be watching, that what's in front of us is not whether the house gets rebuilt, not whether the, what the design is, not what the features of the house may be, it's only whether or not it can be built on the same foundation that the previous house was on. That's what's in front of us.
Under, yes, I think it's just offering it as some background on, at least the.
Oh no, I understand that, but I just want to clarify what's in front of us.
Understood.
Because any issues of design and everything, that's not within our pur. The drawings that you handed out to the audience, are those the same ones we have in front of us?
Uh, they are, they just have color.
It looks, it looks different to me, that's why.
Oops, sir.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
You hand us. Thank you.
I have a post, but I never get it right. I don't have the easel vehicle for that.
Go ahead, Chair.
We're good, we're good.
Seeing none, we'll open the matter up for the public portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the application? If so, come up to the podium. Seeing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, come up to the podium.
Hi, Felicitas Huertas, 118 Hartsdale Road, so literally the next door neighbor. My concerns are, if I'm following the arrows, they are pushing the back more towards the driveway, so they're going to have that back porch right in my window in my room. Before, they had a porch back there, I hardly could sleep because they used to party or whatever, and the front proposed and porch, it's going to be in my window also of my house. They, I don't think this is something that I want to be looking forward to be living side by side like that without, I hardly have a proper space between each neighbor, we are divided just by the driveways, and I don't think it's a good proposition. They broke my windows with the fire and nothing was done, I needed to pay for everything. I don't think it's fair.
Okay, you understand the issue that's in front of us?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone want to talk to us about fires, lot lines, rebuilding? Come right on up and ask your question.
Kyle Lamb, I live at 119 Hartsdale, I can see the foundation, well, been looking at the foundation for quite some time now. I don't understand, it's going to be built up from that foundation, the same foundation, but then.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes.
You just need to direct your question to the board?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
So it's going to be built on the same foundation, but what about structures going outward from that porches and so forth? I mean, is that going to be right on top of the foundation, or is it going to extend out? I don't understand these maps very well.
My understanding of the application, and we'll clarify it with the applicant after the public input portion, but my understanding of the application is that this is going to be built on the footprint of the foundation that is already there, and the question is whether or not from the lot line to the foundation line has to be greater than what is there now, which is what the ordinance would require, which would mean that the house would have to be smaller, and a new foundation would have to be installed and dug, or whether or not they can just use what is there and have that as the distance from the line to the structure. So it would not as far, I'm not seeing anything in here that looks to me like it's going to be hanging over the foundation, and we'll clarify that with the applicant.
Okay, I just, you know, all of our houses on Hartsdale, it's a pretty street, and.
It is.
And we, we're on the close side already, and I realized now that that was a nonconforming prior, so, you know.
Well, I believe that all the houses on Hartsdale.
I would guess that every house on the street is considered pre-existing nonconforming and couldn't meet the setback requirements of today's code, so that's just, and we have lots of neighborhoods in Ronaquoye where that exists.
What happened was the neighborhood was developed, and then some years later, after it was developed, the town adopted a zoning ordinance that had requirements in it that didn't match what was already there, and so all of your houses in the neighborhood are nonconforming pre-existing uses because they're pre-existing the enactment of the ordinance.
I just know how, how close that particular house as it stood was to, to, to our other neighbors. to our other neighbors, already kind of jammed on top of the driveway. And I mean, if you, since it's, since the fire, um, the owners have several times brought an RV into that driveway and it's, it almost hit her house bringing it in. That's how close it is. And I, I just find that very disturbing and I'm, you know, I, I hate to see a new foundation. I'm not, I don't want to, you know, hurt these people in any way, but I'm just against it.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application?
Hi. I'm Sherri Hardeman at 235 Pemberton Road. I live behind this property. And, um, again, the houses are very close. Um, these particular neighbors would be, they had a lot of parties. They were pretty loud. They would leave their dogs out barking at night. They would do big bonfires. And I'm just concerned that having a bigger house and being closer to other residents would just not be a good choice. So I also am opposed to this.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this application?
Sarah Chastain, 111 Hartsdale Road. I'm directly across from this. And I, I know I'm repeating, but every house is on top of each other. Just looking at this drawing, it doesn't, it appears bigger than what the foundation is right now. So it feels like the edges are gonna go over where the baseline of the foundation is. And that's just too close, too close for quarters. And yes, they do have an RV. They have almost hit their own house when it was there. But then when they got the new RV, they were almost backing into the neighbor's house. And I just feel with the house being that close to the driveway and trying to get anything through, there, there, it's just a matter of time before something is damaged. So I, I oppose this as well.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone want to talk to us about, as I said before, fires? Sideline, lot lines, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll ask the applicant if he wishes to address any of the points that were raised during the public input portion. And the first thing I'd like to have clarified is you are not talking about going over-
No.
The existing, so it's gonna come from the foundation and it's gonna come up just exactly at the same distance as it was before?
Yes, we were, we utilized a systematic survey of the parcel and that's the intent. So the footprint would be the footprint and what you see in the isometrics, well, from a scale standpoint, may look big. It's, 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 it's a product of what is shown in, on the site plan.
I guess I have a, a question, if I may. Uh, footprint of the, uh, what's there, the existing building, does it include, uh, the porches?
So, the porch, the porch that's shown, if I would, if you, if I was gonna, if, if you, if we could go out and see the house before it burned down, that corner used to have a house to that corner. So in actuality, the house itself is set inboard of the existing foundation line to have the covered porch over the existing foundation. It is not moving out, it's not in addition to the house.
So actually, there's less- Was there a porch, so there wasn't a porch there, but there was-
Not, it's not like, not similar to this. So the idea was to try to create, you know, the intent was a cottage-style house. And that porch, the intent of the porch was just to add character to that side of the house and the driveway. Knowing that from, from their side of the fence, so to speak, and the driveway, that their house is right to the edge of the driveway. So providing that as a feature, set the house back, gave it some less scale so it's not right on top of the driveway, so that it's inboard of that point on the house.
I understand, but what I don't understand is was the other house right to the driveway?
It was, yes.
All the way to, all the way to the front of the house?
That's, yes. So the, so on, so on your, so on the insta-, on the site plan, what the, the, this, the house that's called out is the existing footprint of, of what would have been there when the house, before the fire.
Inclusive of the porch?
Correct.
Well, there wasn't a porch.
There wasn't, there wasn't the porch.
Right.
That's a feature that's been added to this house, but it doesn't go any closer to the driveway. It doesn't go any closer to Hartsdale. It's within, within the boundaries of what would have been the original footprint of the house.
So there's less house on the first floor to accommodate the porch?
That's correct.
But the porch and what'll be there is the same dimensions as what was there before?
That's correct.
Okay. It's not any closer.
And what about the back porch?
The back porch, the back porch is considered to be, was gonna be steps and just, you know, built up to a back door that used to be as part of the house out to the driveway. It wasn't, it's only, the house is up off the ground, so it's intended-
How deep is the back porch gonna be?
Three feet, plus stairs. It's basically just to get in the door.
So it's just a, it's a landing, it's, it's not really a porch.
Basically, yes.
Okay. The, the next question I have, and then I'll leave you alone, is the overhang of the roof on that side of the house is going to, is gonna, uh, if, if it's a typical overhang, it's usually what, a foot and a half, two feet?
Not even a foot.
Okay, so, but it's, there's only eight-footed driveway there, eight point seven.
Right.
Uh, you know, the folks are, are right in reference to being able to get a, a van in there or-
Well, I can't, I, yeah, I, in, in terms of the, the access of the RV, I, you know, that, I, the driveway is eight feet, that's code, code compliant, uh, if, you know, we're asking for the two feet to maintain that. And we've, we've made a nominal basic height or depth to the, um, overhang to give it at least character. And, you know, at the, at the floor elevation is up above, you know, that first floor is elevated so that it is, you know, from the standpoint of a normal vehicle, you're not, you're gonna clear the under of the eve. It's not, you're not going to impact it. Now, if they choose to bring in an RV and they take out their eve, I can't, I, you know, I can't keep that-
Well, the worry would be they take out their eve or they take out their neighbor's wall.
I, well, yeah, but I-
That, that is a consideration for both of them, you know, uh, uh-
But the interesting thing, though, is that that side of the house that we're speaking to is not the house that we're loo- that's not the side of the house where we're looking for a variance. We're looking for the variance on the other side of the house. That side of the house, we're just looking for, to basically reconstruct the driveway within where it is now. Which, we, you know, if they just topped it and they could leave it, but the intent is to replace it so that it's a new driveway to go with the new house.
Okay. I'm looking at a picture of the old, old house right now.
Yeah.
And it did have an overhang on the roof also.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So we have a vacant basement and we are gonna build a new house. It seems like if there's a time to fix something that's not right, now's the time to do it. I mean, we can argue back and forth on this all night, whether it's legal or the same as what's being applied. The point is, and this is where I, I have to see her point of view. She has to live with this for the rest of the time. And, uh, there's a chance to fix it now. My question is, why can't we fix this now? And so my question is, how much more room on the driveway side of that house? Would that house have to move back to be an effective alteration that, that she can live with?
I guess that's not, I guess that's the question. You're, you're asking the neighbor for input about my client's house. And the, and, and you're asking a question that, you know, one foot, two foot?
Yeah.
I, I think, well, that, I think the, what we're, what we're talking about is the intent is to reinforce and rebuild on what's there. By asking to move it in, you're, that's changing, you know, we're, it's, it's, it's sort of changing what, what the intent of what we're doing.
I understand that.
Yes.
I understand that. I also understand that she has to go in there every day, too.
Well, that's true. And I, I'm, I, I can, I, you know, understand that. I mean, I, I just, someone that had the misfortune of having to deal with a fire to a property that they own and all we're asking here is the board's consideration, approval, to build it in, in kind of what was there. And that, I, and that anyone in that neighborhood that would have had a fire would have to be here and ask the same questions. And depending on, you know, what, what that might impact an owner's yard and that they take credence over the per, the property owner, that, we're not asking for increasing the non-conformity. All we're asking for is the consideration on the part of the neighbors and the board that someone had, there was a fire to a property and we're just asking to rebuild it.
And actually, your setback that you're looking for, for the building, is not even the driveway side.
Right.
So that, so we really don't have, uh, it, it's already falling within code for the driveway side. The only setback we're gonna be looking for is the setback of the driveway, right? If I'm reading this correctly?
Well, the side, the driveway itself, you're, and they could ta-, they could just put blacktop on what's there now and it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Right.
And they're allowed to do that. What they're looking at doing is probably taking it up and putting it back down in the same spot. And because they're doing that, essentially reconstructing, they would need a setback on the driveway location.
Right.
The, the portion of the structure that needs setbacks would be on the-
Other side.
On the other side of the property.
Right.
So that's-
So when, when we discussed the driveway, it was brought to my attention, if there was the need to rebuild it, that we would have to come before the board to ask permission to do that because it's within the setback restrictions within the town code. So we included it with the application to do it is basically bring, at least as we know it now, that, you know, that that, the intention is to, to do something to it. I can't speak specifically, the, the assumption is because it's been there and, and the damage, that it would have to be replaced. Recon, you know, basically torn out and re, reinstall.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear about a couple things. First, if you were to build this new house within the confines of the zoning ordinance, it would have, require a new foundation or at least partially a new foundation.
That's correct.
And that would, I would suspect, be a substantial, uh, cost increase, correct?
Yes.
And if you were to do that, it would be the only house in the neighborhood that would be setback al- along those lines, right?
Excuse me, chairman? Would you mind moving your microphone just over a smidge? Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry, usually my voice carries. So you're, if, it would be a substantial cost increase to the project to move the foundation to, other than where it is now.
That's correct.
And it would be, if that were done, it would be the only house in the neighborhood that would be in conformity with the statute, right?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I was, that's what I thought.
I imagine the insurance company would have something to say about that, too.
Yes.
I'm sure.
I take it the overall square footage up and down is the same that it was?
Well, if you include the porch, because again, the porch takes into that space, but yes.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I just think it's frustrating when you have a situation, you're kind of locked in. There are really not a lot of options here.
Well, we did, I think, again, I, I don't want to belabor the point on the porch, but there, there was, there was the consideration on the part of the design, and I'm speaking from, on the architecture side, that the, the inclusion of that porch within, within the house was number one to, to help mitigate the issue of scale on basically a small site and a house that basically, for all the houses, that basically go from property line to property line within reason. So we added that porch as a way of pushing the house proper back from that corner, which in fact pushes it back from the, the house, you know, from that side of the house and helps at least establish a different scale of that house at that corner on the same footprint. So, and add, so that it isn't, that there is a feature that helps at least not necessarily put it right at that corner. This corner is what we're talking about. Now, within terms of the layout of the house, you know, the house very much is similar with the sun, you know, the sunroom and the living room and the, you know, it's, in terms of layout, it's, it's very simple. There's not much to it. And most of it is just trying to maximize the space left over from that first floor to basically create a house that, from a two-bedroom scenario for a small family, that would be, you know, with one full bath, it's not intended to be a house where you're gonna have, you know, multi-, you know, like a large family living there. The house doesn't warrant it, nor does the site, nor does the driveway. So I think with respect to the issue at hand, which is an existing house that succumbed to a fire that was destroyed, that someone owns and has vested money in a house, whatever, however small or large, it's their piece of the pie. That all, all they're asking to do, and with consideration to some of the issues we're talking about, we've tried to create a house that is respectful of the town, the neighborhood, and the neighbors. I can't speak to an RV parking too close or a bonfire in the back of the house or, you know, that, I, you know, that unfortunately is not germane to what, um, you know, what we're talking about. All we're trying to do is put back into the neigh, into the town, into this neighborhood, a house that would be, you know, respectful of that town, or of that street and of that neighborhood. And I believe that that's what this does, so.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir.
Uh, wait, I have one other question. Jeff? Did you say that the total square footage is gonna be the same or greater?
It's, I thi-, it's within like ten, fifteen square feet, I think, within terms of size.
Cause the upper story looks different.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the one thing to keep in, is that the heads of the windows are right at six-eight and all the ceilings up there are basically, for the lack of better term, sloped to get the headroom because of, we, we stayed within the town's twenty-four-foot height restriction. So the available foot, like, some of the perimeter areas are just closets that, you know, aren't habitable space, basically.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
We'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and the board will be in recess until, um, seven fifty-five. So, is the applicant still here for 27 Anchor Terrace? There you are, yes. 388 Angeles Drive, yes. 69 Scotch Lane, yes. And 112 Hartsdale, yes. All right. So, we will start at the top of the agenda. The first application that we have before us is pertaining to 27 Anchor Terrace. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll, I'll make a motion on 27 Anchor Terrace. Based on the findings, I don't believe it'll hurt the character of the neighborhood. I don't believe it'll be an environmental concern. I, I believe that there is no alternative if they want to put a nice center room in their backyard. I believe we should approve the setback, or the rear setback variance. I don't believe it's substantial enough. And again, because of the way the lots are down on the terraces, I believe the percentage difference for the lot coverage is not significant enough that it'll make a difference. So, based on that criteria, I believe we should approve it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The board is fully constituted, and we're all present. Next, uh, application pertains to 388 Angeles Drive. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request for the following reasons. It's not really any kind of a change to the neighborhood. We're talking about a six-foot fence here as opposed to four. Even though there might be an alternative, it doesn't require variance, a, a lower fence would be a waste. It wouldn't, it wouldn't do a thing. So, really, there is no other alternative than to make a higher fence. It's not a substantial request because we're talking about some, some footage in the backyard or a side yard, depending on which way you're looking at the house. There certainly would not be any adverse effect on the physical or physical, or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And is it self-created? Not really, because she, she's just looking for some privacy, and, and this person's opinion, that's a very reasonable thing to do. Based on those findings, I think we should approve it.
I second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We continue to be all present. Next application before us tonight pertains to 69 Scotch Lane. Uh, this is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make an app, a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion for Scotch Lane. 69 Scotch Lane, uh, again, I don't believe this'll, uh, hurt. This is the extension of the garage. I don't believe this is going to hurt the character of the neighborhood. I don't believe it's going to have a adverse effect on the environment. I also believe it is a self-created issue, but it is just self-created because they want a little larger garage. And they are not going, uh, to make it too big where it wouldn't fit in the, uh, in, on the lot appropriately. So, based on, uh, the, what I believe is a small variance for the, uh, side setback, I also, in, in saying that, the side setback, uh, is going down, but there is a, a large, um, break between the other house next door. So, uh, again, if it was a tight situation, we might have to reconsider, but because it's not tight, and, and you can get, uh, if you had to, an emergency get between the two houses. Again, based on all that, I think we should approve it.
Second.
Take your pick.
Any, uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The entire board remains present. Next item before us is the application pertaining to 112, uh, Hartsdale Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, grant the variance as requested based on the following findings of fact. With respect to the possible change to the neighborhood character, this is not going to, the granting of the variances that are being requested, which is a setback of the driveway and a setback of the, uh, west side of the house. And the overall width of the lot is not, uh, going to change the character of the neighborhood. All of the houses in this neighborhood are not in conformity with the zoning ordinances because they were built before the zoning ordinance was enacted and, and set in place, the, uh, side and front setback requirements. The alternatives that would not require a variance would require relocating the foundation of the house, which would be a substantial, uh, cost. And it would result in a house that is unique in the neighborhood in that it would be the only house in the neighborhood that would have, uh, compliance with the setback requirements in the zoning ordinance. It is not a substantial request. It is a request of, of about two feet in terms of the front setback. It's slightly under three feet. Uh, and again, it is replacing what was there with some variations, but not variations in terms of where the foundation is and where the structure will be in relation to the foundation. Uh, there is no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions if the variances are granted. It is not a self-created situation. It results from the fact that there was a fire that destroyed the house, and the fact that the zoning ordinance was enacted after the house was already built, and the whole neighborhood was already built. I understand and appreciate the concerns that the neighbors have voiced, but those don't relate to the sole issue that's in front of us, which is those setbacks. And as to that, um, I believe that the, uh, applicant has more than demonstrated a practical hardship, which is the standard for an area variance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and the board is all present. The only other item I believe that's before us tonight, which I will abstain from, is the minutes of the February meeting where I was not in attendance. So, is there a motion that someone wishes to make with respect to the minutes of the February meetings?
I'll make a motion to approve them. Russ wasn't here, also, and Tim was an alternate.
Okay, so, Russ and I will abstain?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Thomas and I abstained, so the minutes are approved by a vote of five in favor, no opposed, two abstentions, and we continue to be all present. And that, I believe, concludes our agenda, and we are adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the ICAID zoning board on ICAT Government Access.